Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Albany City Council Meeting, April ninth, Wednesday, April ninth, 2025 at 6:00 P. M. I will now call the meeting to order, and would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. We'll now have a roll call, please. Counselor McLeod.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Newton Azor.
Present.
Counselor Thompson.
Here.
Counselor Montague.
Here.
Mayor Johnson. Here. Next on tonight's agenda, item three, adoption of the consent calendar. Counselors, do you have any discussion or motion on this?
I move we adopt the consent calendar as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Motion is adopted. Next, special presentation. Presentation ceremonies, item four, one to another nonprofit presentation. Debbie Barreras, she hears this today, see me? Oh, there she is, hi.
Is it okay if I just stand here?
Uh, no, I'd like you to come up here, please, yes.
This is my first city council meeting ever, and this is kind of intimidating, just so you guys know. This is a big room for me, and it's a room that feels a lot like court.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Oh, yes, I can do that.
You're addressing us, and then we'll.
Oh, I'm addressing you guys. Well, first of all, I want to thank you for inviting me to come today, and I want to thank all of you for taking the time to listen to what I have to say. As it says, I'm with One to Another. We're a local nonprofit that does parenting classes and supports for children with challenging behaviors and mental health disabilities. And we offer, we've been doing this now for about nineteen years. We first became a nonprofit, though, only six years ago. And then COVID hit, and we kind of had some difficulties, and we had to rebuild, and we're finally rebuilt, and we're back to full swing. In the past year, we served, excuse me, we served thirty-eight hundred adults and fifteen hundred children and two hundred and seventy-five young adults. And the way that we serve them is we offer parenting classes that help parents set up their homes with structure and support and communication that reach the kids. And then we also offer one-on-one support to the parents and individuals in our community. And we do skill building with parents and kids. Our young adult program is just getting off the ground after COVID, and we have a living today forward where they're learning life skills and communication skills and how to set their lives up for success as well. And we have about seventy-five to eighty volunteers currently that are oriented and serving our community through our program. And they serve our program by helping set up our groups and helping provide peer support, traditional health worker level peer support, help families navigate systems and be able to get through difficult times with their kiddos. And we do a lot of behavior intervention pieces with that as well. The other thing that we have going on right now is currently here in Albany, we have a volunteer training class going on, and we have forty-two people attending that on Thursday evenings for ten weeks, learning how to be volunteers. And a part of our program is also we train folks to get job skills, to go back to work and/or be able to enter the work world. And in fact, we run our office solely on volunteers. And of those volunteers, we have a big turnover because they come, they don't have any job skills. They, we work with them for about a year to a year and a half, and they get really good at their job, and then they find a job where they can get paid, and they go on and they get, they have that success, which is really exciting for us. I did want to tell you while I was had your ear for a moment that One to Another is solely run through volunteers, and we're serving those people through that process. United Way started working with us this last June, and they're working with us to transition from being a solely volunteer program to start having some paid staff so that we can be around for a long time and have longevity. Our specialty is that families can come to us as many times as they need to or want to. They can come back as often as they want. We have an open door policy, and they absolutely can connect with us and have a community that they get to be a part of. In addition to all of the classes for parenting that we offer, we also offer anger management for parents and codependency or breaking cycles and how to set boundaries for parents. And then we also do special events throughout the year. We do a great big barbecue at the end of the summer, and we have about two hundred and fifty families come to that. And then in the winter, we do a holiday meal, and most of our families are very low income, and they don't get a holiday meal without our holiday meal. And we have about two hundred families that attend that holiday meal, and the kids get gifts and that sort of thing. So we're just rebuilding, and we're in the process. I'm really excited to be able to be getting back to where we're serving the families at the level that we wanted to. And I don't really have any, I was looking up what you do at a city council meeting, because like I said, this is new for me. And I don't really have any request out of the council other than to know that we're here, and I'm going to leave some materials in case you have anybody that you might want to refer, and just to know that we're here and that we're wanting to serve families. And the niche that we have is that families can come, be connected, stay connected, and have a family of their own, an extended family through our program. They can gain job skills and that we're going to be teaching skills, and we'll follow them as long as they need to. Of this, when we first started nineteen years ago, we had seven families who came to a parenting class, and they wouldn't go away. And so I kind of tried to send them away, because that's what you're supposed to do at the end of a parenting class, is you're supposed to go, right? They wouldn't go. So I finally met with them after they kept coming almost a full year and asked them what they were doing, and they said they wanted to make sure it stayed. Of those seven, I still have three of those families that are part of the volunteer base of one to another, and I think that that's a really huge compliment to the change and the life that one to another has given them. One of them, her son is an autistic young man. He's now in his twenties, and he comes to our group, and he's now starting to be a part of our setup crew and our breakdown crew of our groups, and he feels like he's gaining some skills that maybe someday he'll have a job, and that would be just absolutely wonderful because he's very low functioning. So that's the kind of thing that we do, and I just really appreciate the opportunity to share with you. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions, please? Counselor McLeod?
Hi, Debbie.
Hi.
I've been to one of your classes.
Oh, you have?
I have.
Oh, awesome. I thought you looked familiar.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for the work that you do, and I love that you have that open door policy where parents can come back whenever they want, and I just wanted to thank you for the work that you do.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, I thought you looked familiar, but I didn't know where from, so.
Well, you look familiar to me because our kids went to school together.
Our kids went to school together, yes.
So thank you for coming. Any other counselors have anything?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Debbie. So for you, for you that don't know, when COVID hit, it was my first meetings, and I've worked with the city manager in making sure that people knew what nonprofits were available during COVID, what services were available. So I started this special presentation program, and every month I try to have at least one nonprofit come and share what they do, how they help the community, how they support the people that live in the city of Albany, Oregon. And it's been a great success. I've heard good stories from people that said people donated money, they donated clothes, they dropped off books, they volunteer, and so it's something I plan to continue as long as you guys are having as mayor. So next on tonight's, and thank you, Debbie, for coming. Appreciate it. Next on tonight's agenda is a legislative public hearing, and I'm going to switch to that document. It's a legislative public hearing. The applicant is the City of Albany Community Development Department. I call to order legislative public hearing at six oh eight P. M. The purpose of this hearing for the city council's consideration is legislative amendments to Albany Comprehensive Zone, the zoning map and development code to adopt climate-friendly areas and walkability standards as described in planning files CP zero one dash twenty-five and Zebra Charlie zero one two five and Delta Charlie zero two dash two five. Do any counselors have any conflict of interest to disclose? Hearing none. Well, we will first hear from the staff report followed by a public testimony. At this time, I call on a staff report from Comprehensive Planning Manager Anne Catlin.
Thank you, Mayor and counselors. I am the Conference of Planning Manager in the Community Development Department, Anne Catlin. So we are here tonight after several years of working on trying to comply with state rules that were adopted back in 2022 to try to reduce pollution from transportation and encourage equitable development. And the program is called Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities. We've done several steps of that work that is outlined in state law, and we are now sort of nearing the end of the work. We're not done, but this is the next step, and it is to officially designate and adopt our climate-friendly areas and also associated standards to encourage and support pedestrian-friendly development. So what are climate-friendly areas? They are existing or planned urban centers. Our downtown is a good example of one of those. Mixed uses are allowed. The statute requires us to allow variety uses, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. And then these areas are walkable and accessible, and they need to be served by transit and actually be within a certain radius of our transit system. And I'll explain why and how we picked our areas in just a minute. So the other big piece of the requirements is that these areas have to have the capacity to accommodate thirty percent of our future housing needs in 2040, which is eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-one units. So there were some formulas that sort of assumed land is all vacant, and there's some information I'll share with you about that. So where are we proposing these? So there are six areas, and these are all located on a transit line. The green lines you see on the screen are Albany's bus routes. So we looked at trying to locate one of these in all areas of town. You'll see there's one proposed in North Albany, in the heart of downtown, our main street area. The mall is proposed to be that Fourteenth Avenue claim area is supposed to, is proposed to be our primary climate-friendly area. There's one a little further south of that, East Albany, a lot of undeveloped land there. And then South Albany, we have a lot of undeveloped land in near Fifty-third Avenue and Pacific Boulevard. So the reason why we wanted to disperse these areas is we feel that there should be walkable mixed-use areas in all areas of our city and not just in one area of the community. We also wanted to make sure that we had enough land that was vacant or had redevelopment potential, like parking lots, so that we could actually accommodate a reasonable amount of housing. We're not expecting to see every single new unit go into these areas. Okay, so the package of amendments includes Conference of Plan amendments. There are a few minor amendments to the text and the language in chapters eight and nine, mostly just to refer to climate-friendly areas and make sure those are referenced in the Conference of Plan. And then there is one map amendment, one of the properties in the climate-friendly area in at Fifty-third and Ninety-Nine in South Albany is proposed to go from Commercial General to Village Center, and Village Center was created back in the early 2000s to try to create these walkable mixed-use areas. So we thought that that made sense, and the property owners support that. The accompanying zoning map amendments would be specific, that are property-specific, would be the same property I just mentioned, changing the zoning from regional commercial to mixed-use commercial. And then there are a couple of properties below this, changing those from neighborhood commercial to community commercial. The zone changes better reflect the intended outcomes of the climate-friendly areas, and the property owners were supportive of that. There's also over in the primary climate-friendly area at near the Heritage Mall, Sixteenth and Gary Street, we're just proposing to change a little tiny property zone RM to RMA. And the criteria for zoning map amendments, they need to be consistent with the Conference of Plan, all of these are, with the Associated Conference of Plan Map Amendment for one, and that facilities and services are adequate to support the changes, which they are. Two other things, the Conference Plan Map and the Zoning Map will have an outline boundary that shows where those climate-friendly areas are located on the map. And it's sort of a good segue. We're not changing the base zoning of any of these properties, except for what I just showed you on the screen, which property owners were interested in having happen with this package. The base zones already, for the most part, allow a variety of housing and jobs and government facilities, public facilities, things that you would want to see in an area where you might want to walk to services and amenities. The heights in almost all of these areas was already fifty feet. There is only a neighborhood commercial, which is now community commercial, and then office professional is thirty feet, but everything else was already fifty feet, and the RM zone, which is now zoned RMA, was forty-five feet. So we tried to find areas where we would have very little change to the base zone because we didn't want this to be a big change in concern property owners. There are some minimum density requirements, there are net density requirements. So in all the climate-friendly areas, except for the mall, that's fifteen units a net acre. It'd be easy to do townhouses on those. And while I mentioned townhouses, that is the one housing type that would now be allowed in some of the zones that where it is not, and that's a state requirement. And then in the primary climate-friendly area, it's twenty-five units a net acre. So we tried to identify areas where we want to see denser development, and that's why we identified the mall area as our primary. There are other development code amendments. It was a really large package, mostly related to areas that we needed to refer to the new climate-friendly standards or uses throughout the code. One of the pieces I mentioned earlier was the walkability standards and making sure that these areas are developed with a pedestrian-friendly nature. And so we are applying design standards that already exist in our code that are applicable to village centers and climate-friendly areas, and then we're modifying them a little bit to improve them based on some community input we had. And here's just a list of some of those standards. So the review criteria that we base these decisions on, there are, I'll summarize them, similar for some of the different types of amendments. Essentially, they need to be compatible with our Conference of Plan, all of our goals and policies in the plan, as well as Oregon statewide planning goals. So I've listed a few of those on the screen. Land use planning, housing, transportation, urbanization, those are the primary ones that this package of amendments supports. We need to make sure that we are being responsive to community needs and changes in state law. We know that we need more variety of housing options in a variety of locations, and I think this package does that. Transportation, we hope that designating some of these areas, climate-friendly areas, it will actually encourage spending and projects that come out of our new TSP, which will be underway, Transportation Systems Plan, that will be underway soon. Prioritizing projects in these areas so that we are really trying to put the money, you know, where we say we want these things. And urbanization, efficient use of land, it also is efficient use of our resources, services, and utilities. So it makes sense to continue to rebuild and support our existing city zoning and then avoid sprawl. So we are seeing changes. These are new rules. This is why we are doing this. We think that in the end, it won't have a lot of impact based on the base zoning not changing that much, but it could result in more variety and more mixed-use development around the city, which would be a good thing, and support our transit system, et cetera. We staff feels that these amendments meet the goals and policies of our Conference of Plan and do so that they better achieve these goals and policies and also statewide planning goals. And as I've noted, base zoning is not changing. We also have different overlay zoning districts. So I think I mentioned this climate-friendly area would be an overlay zone, so just the additional standards would apply within those boundaries. We have a historic district overlay zone. Any property that might be in a historic district or subject to those regulations, all of those regulations still apply, floodplain, wetlands, any of our natural resources. You're not exempt from any of our existing standards, but just because you're in the climate-friendly area. So as I mentioned, we've been working on this for a couple of years. We held quite a few workshops back in 2023. You may remember, we started off with more climate-friendly areas, and we actually reduced the scope down, and this is moving forward pretty much what you recommended after that first round of, well, where should our climate-friendly areas be? We cast a wider net, we narrowed it down. That's not to say that you may want to amend boundaries. The main thing to keep in mind is that we do need to make sure we have capacity to meet that eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-one units, and I'd like to have a little buffer, maybe around nine or ten thousand. We did mail notice to property owners to participate in more recent meetings, and then we also mailed them the required Measure Fifty-Six notice, ads were in the paper, and tried to keep our website and interested parties up to date. So we have received some testimony, and then there are people here tonight, and you may not have noticed that at the very end of your packet, there were some letters, one from Suzanne Phillips and one from Cameron Settlemeyer, and then there was another one from Cameron. These were submitted for the Planning Commission. Oh, before I forget, Article four, I've, I missed one article, which really has very minor changes. Some of the other amendments we have with the Development Code are changing some of our shallows to musts and then referring to Article fourteen, our new climate-friendly area zone. I'm sorry, that's on your dais, and you've got motions that reflect changes to that and some minor amendments to Exhibit E, which are the findings that were Scrivener's errors. Anyways, so Suzanne Phillips is a Monteet District resident, and she supports these changes. She feels that supporting more walkable and denser development might create more bikeable, walkable, and better transit. Cameron Settlemeyer, you may have read two letters from him. He is not supportive of these changes. He is concerned, and as am I, that, you know, these, being in a climate-friendly area might impact historic resources, which are goal five resources, those are statewide planning goal resources, as well as our natural resources, including the Willamette River. We do have the Article seven overlay standards, as I mentioned, and also our natural resource standards that any development would need to comply with. That really, to me, means that we need to make sure that our Article seven standards are clear and objective and also ensure that we see compatible, compatible development, whether or not this area becomes a climate-friendly area in the downtown. I do have some slides to show you some of this if you want to discuss this later in looking at the boundaries and stuff in that, in that area.
Anne, you'll want to skip your updates on your, on your computer. Kenzie, can you clear the screen? That's, that's on your screen.
I see, I see. Sorry, I'm not looking at my screen. Thank you. Yep. Alana Kanegi wrote a short letter. She asked me to read it into the record, but essentially she supports the North Albany Climate Friendly Area, which is area Site C, and would like to see this area being used to reduce homelessness, similar to development that's in Eugene Opportunity Village, which is a little different than our tiny home village, but she was supportive of the, of the proposal. And if you have questions now, I can show some slides. I did try to send these out in advance. If you wanted to talk about, you might want to hear testimony first, and then if you wanted to talk more about concerns from the public, I can bring this presentation back up.
So the, so the next item, the question is, are there any preliminary questions from, questions of staff? That's the next item on the agenda. Counselor Newton Azor.
Yeah, I was curious. How about the, you know, the application that was with Drama? It was that home that was purchased over on Ferry, and then they wanted to utilize it as a business. Would this impact that?
No, it's outside of the area.
Okay, and then what are some protections for the historic district? I'm worried that maybe to accommodate new developments, there might be pressure to demolish or significantly alter some historic structures. Are there any protections or things we can do to put in place for that?
So in, when you review Article seven and work with the landmarks commission to review Article seven, you can have demolition denial. We have a stay right now. That's something that some other cities have. There are tools that you can add. I will just say that right now, the downtown historic district, the height is less than the, this is confusing, but there's the historic district, which is an overlay zone. And it is surrounded by a zone called Historic Downtown. So there's the HD zone, and within that is the Historic Downtown National Register Historic District. The height in the Historic Downtown Zone, I researched this because I want to make sure I had my, my stuff right. It is a lot, eighty-five feet since, for quite some time, it used to be a commercial zone. And then Lion Elsworth, so it, but in that historic district boundary, the height is limited to sixty-five feet. The climate-friendly area in this area, we only need to allow height of fifty feet. So again, it's not going to change any of the development capacity in terms of scale and height, lot coverage, any of the existing standards. It's not changing that. The only use that would be allowed that isn't allowed now in the Historic Downtown Zone and the Lion Elsworth Zone are townhouses. And so the Lion Elsworth Zone is currently allows sixty feet. I don't know why, but it does. And the community, I'm sorry, Central Business District allows sixty-five feet. This climate-friendly area only needs to allow fifty feet. Now, if we were, had picked areas where we, and we didn't, zoned residential, only thirty feet tall, and then going from thirty feet to fifty feet would have been a big impact. You know, we purposely selected zones where you already were essentially allowed the capacity of development that were in these climate-friendly areas. Now, I don't know if that answers your question, but I will say, and I've got some pictures. We used to have six-story, we had a six-story building, we had a five-story building downtown, four stories, a lot of three-story buildings in downtown that were lost due to fire or removed for parking lots or the Lion Elsworth Bridge, bridges. Communities change over time, and I think the key is ensuring we have standards that new development will be compatible.
Okay, and I have asked a follow-up question as well, and I've always have a question about the rivers. So I live in the historic district, and I wanted to just make sure you can confirm this. The architectural continuity, anything that is placed in the downtown district would still reflect the same style, would still kind of blend in with the historic, with the homes in that has in that area, correct?
Well, the review criteria, I don't have them memorized anymore. I used to do the historic preservation planning, but there are, the standards essentially, new development needs to be compatible with the character of the historic downtown. Again, we're hoping that Article seven will be, it, there's been a lot of public input about it, but that is a time to really ensure that your historic district standards are doing what you want them to do, and that's a separate layer of regulation that the climate-friendly areas aren't affecting, but you can affect that.
Okay. And then in regards to water quality, increased development, I'm just worried about stormwater runoff that can carry pollutants to the river. Are we equipped to handle this?
Yeah, so all development must meet the city's stormwater quality standards and have stormwater actually drain into our stormwater, drain it. and have stormwater actually drain into our stormwater drain system, so it doesn't run into the river. Again, the zones, the base zone already allows development and almost full lot coverage. Applying a climate-friendly area overlay doesn't change that.
And then, sorry, my last thing, I just want to double check. I'm worried about as we, as we grow and become more dense in these areas, it'll become more of like a heat island effect. Are we going to be prioritizing tree canopies and other ways to offset?
Yeah, yep, good. So we've already amended the Development Code to require more trees in parking lots over a quarter of an acre. So if there was a parking lot or improvements to a parking lot, adding on to a parking lot that got you over a quarter acre, there is a 40% tree canopy requirement, or you can do solar panels or a combination of. Right now, a lot of our vacant lots where you might see redevelopment are actually parking lots with no trees. So, you know, you can have green roofs. I mean, I don't know that we would require that, but one of the pieces with the parking, we don't require parking anymore, but we also now require a lot more trees than what we have in the past.
Awesome, thanks.
Do the councilors have any comments, questions? Councilor Monigui?
So didn't we remove one of the sites from downtown? Because we were kind of worried about some of the things that were brought up as far as displacement and height requirement. Like you said, if it was a residential area, then that height wouldn't make sense. Is that, that's, if I'm remembering that correctly?
You are. We had the waterfront zone and the mixed-use residential zones and the Main Street Zone identified as a climate-friendly area, and took those out. One of the other issues was you've got small properties, property sizes, and we still have that in the Lion Ellsworth District and throughout downtown. The lots are not that large unless you happen to own a block, you've already got a street network. So the scale of development is limited really by height and that lot size or block size.
Councilor McLeod?
Thank you. A couple of things. First, the, the property off of 53rd, that's, that's my neighborhood. I'm super excited. We really need a grocery store there, so I'm really excited about that.
What she said.
Yeah, the mayor lives down there, too. Also, I keep hearing you talking about townhouses in, in all of these areas, and my concern is with townhouses downtown in the historic district. Has there ever been townhouses historically in downtown? And if, if we do end up having townhouses built in that area, how is that going to keep the historic downtown looking historical? And would the infrastructure be able to accommodate a number of townhomes in that area?
Well, I don't know if townhomes were, I haven't seen pictures of townhouses. There were duplexes, there were, larger houses were sort of boarding houses, that was very common. You know, that is the one land use that a lot of the cities wish wasn't in state law that has to be allowed. And, you know, if you want to remove that, because you don't want to see townhouses downtown. I mean, there's market demand at play, you know, cost of land, size of land, lots of land. There's, I mean, it, it is an issue. Now, I will, I grew up on the East Coast, and I'm telling you brownstones, attached brownstones and townhouse, I mean, those are townhouses, single detached dwellings on their own lot, and those are really common. And then you might have a fourplex or a sixplex or an eightplex on the corner, and they, they can fit in. And one of the things that's part of this package is, well, we do have townhouses being built downtown, right by my house on Third and near Montgomery. It's right next to the church that Chance owns. We are not going to allow garages to face the street. That's one of the things that really takes away from that pedestrian feel and ability to walk without cars hanging over the sidewalk. So any residential development in the climate-friendly areas would need to have rear loaded garages if they provide garages or parking. So the standards will ensure that if there was a residential development that went all the way to the ground level, that you've got that pedestrian-friendly facade that fits into the character of the neighborhood.
And the infrastructure question?
What about the, I'm sorry, I missed the infrastructure question.
For, i- i- if, if we have all of these new townhomes and we have all of these new residents, infrastructure, like water, sewer, how is that going to be impacted if, for whatever reason, a huge chunk of it becomes townhomes?
That's what we do our master planning for. And so yet the lines are sized for what we anticipate growth to be over time and in different areas. And, you know, the, the zoning right now allows for, you know, five or six-story buildings that could have housing above all of it. You could have, you know, a 200-unit apartment complex downtown. So, I mean, the infrastructure is there, and, and that's why they, Public Works Staff works to continue to revise their plans every eight to 10 years to stay on top of changes over time. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Just want to, question process, don't we have public testimony coming up?
It's coming next.
Then do I get a chance to talk after that?
We're going to talk.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a hearing.
Thank you, thank you.
This is just the preliminary questions.
Yeah, I have no.
And then as we get to deliberations, we can talk more about it.
Sure, sure, sure.
You have any questions now?
I don't now.
Okay, thank you. We will now, no, Item Seven, we will now hear public testimony. Please confine your remarks to the application and review criteria described in the staff. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. I will now call on those who registered to speak, followed by those who did not register to speak. Refer to the public hearing sign-up sheet. That, what's your now name, sir?
Honifer.
Honifer, thank you.
So I live in North Albany. The traffic pattern for much of North Albany, when they come to Albany, is like a funnel. All the traffic flows into a roundabout at the top of North Albany Road, goes down the spout, so to speak, to the choke point, which is the traffic light at the intersection with Route 20 and the bridge. So tonight, it only took me 15 minutes to get through that light and across the bridge. Sometimes it's 20 or 25 minutes. In fact, if I were going to have a heart attack, I'd go to Corvallis, which is 10 miles away, even though I'm three miles from the Albany Hospital, if it was in Russia, because I don't want to die in the bridge. This is my understanding, is that we are talking about adding 1,800 to 2,500 housing units at the choke point of that traffic, down contiguous with Interstate 20 and close to North Albany Road. If you look at the average number of cars per household in the United States right now is about 1.9. So that means we're talking about 3,500 to 5,000 cars added down at the choke point. I would just ask you to reconsider the volume of housing that you're approving in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Brad Dennis, North Albany Neighborhood Association. Hello, Brad.
I'm Brad Dennis. I do live in North Albany. The first comment that came to me after I got here tonight is, isn't it incredible how the state has stripped authority from the cities to where we can no longer make our own decisions, but that we're having to follow the regulations from on high? That's a problem. But regarding the climate-friendly area, regarding the, the choke point in North Albany, that was my comments as well. And I know that the city hired and paid probably many thousands of dollars to DKS associates to study the transportation problems on Highway 20, across the bridge, and to downtown, and all the way out to Highway 99. And they've identified solutions, but my recommendation is that the site for Hickory be dropped until those recommendations can be implemented. And once they're implemented, you can always come back and add Site C. So the ci, again, the city paid a lot of money for this study, so we recommend putting it to use and postponing the designation for the Hickory site. And we believe that the other sites are sufficient to meet the demands of the state. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is former Councilor Matilda Novak. How are you, Matilda? How are you?
Happy to be here, on this side. Yeah, I was happy to serve, and I'm very happy to be right here, right now.
Good.
Where I can come and go at will. Yay. But thank you all for serving. I'm glad you're doing what you're doing. So one question I have is regarding great neighborhoods. When I came on the council, that was one of the pillars of our comprehensive plan. Have we by any chance done away with that?
No.
I'm so glad to hear that.
This is, this is a public hearing, so.
Okay, well, it is relevant, if you'll just let me finish my sentence, sir. Thank you. The reason I ask is because what's being proposed here by Executive Order 2040, and I have to say, I do take issue with being ruled by executive order, because where is the public input for that? There isn't any. Instead, as was just mentioned, we're being dictated what we must do, how we must do it, when we must do it. Our voices, our authority, our input are pretty much taken from us. So I have a problem with that, and I'm not the only one who does. When I was on the council, I spoke out against the consideration of Site C in North Albany to be considered as a climate-friendly zone, for reasons that have already been stated and which I've also stated. Site A, the historic district, I would submit to you that if you do follow through with development there, depending on how it's done, it is reasonable in that area for infill housing, and I would be in agreement with that. But if you do up to seven stories of development, you know, apartment houses, seven stories high, I did see seven stories is permitted and suggested and encouraged in this climate-friendly, what they're proposing. And I think that, I actually wonder logically, if the purpose of Executive Order 2040 was to fight climate pollution, how on earth does increasing density, increasing housing everywhere, cramming it in as much as you can, how is this actually fighting climate pollution? How is it not doing just the exact opposite of what it's supposed to be helping? Logically, that makes no sense to me. So I, I am very much in favor of, as Mr. Dennis suggested, put Site C on hold. I watched the legislative hearing recently where our own representatives commended Albany for the way we've been complying. We're so compliant in Albany with whatever comes down the pipe. They said we should have a, they didn't use the word moratorium, but for a time. Leave those areas alone, not only North Albany, but consideration for the entire town, because we've been so compliant. We've built so many houses. I would ask this council to consider that. Thank you.
Item B of seven, or second item, is does any member in the audience wish to testify? If intending to virtually, please raise your hand or unmute yourself to be called upon. No, we do have one in the audience. Please come on up.
I'm actually the first name on the list, but.
Oh, where's that? Oh, it's typed in. I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I apologize, Gary.
No problem. So my name's Gary Hofer. I live in North Albany as well. I'm absolutely opposed to Section C, or Site C, rather, for the climate-friendly area. And to give you a little bit of background for North Albany, it was first annexed in 1991. At that point, we had about 3,000 people. In 2023, we have 12,000 people. The roads have not changed, other than widening Gibson Hill, adding a traffic circle, putting a sidewalk in and a bike path in. It's essentially stayed the same. The last traffic study was in 2010. Since 2010, we've had almost 900 homes built. The next traffic study is going to take 1.5 years to complete. In 2022, we built 59 houses out in North Albany. In the next year, 2023, we had a 40% increase in traffic accidents. So traffic is a problem. As a result, congestion, we've heard from three other people here, that traffic in North Albany is, is dire in, in many instances. And that's going to result in a delay in police, fire, ambulances. And I hate to say it, but it's going to set the city of Albany up for a massive lawsuit for wrongful death. I spoke with a woman who was a civil engineer for San Francisco, and I told her our situation, what's going on. She said, there's no way in the world that this type of construction would be allowed without a traffic study prior to the construction. So why are we doing it here? Now, we're turning to Site C. It's a 2.5-acre parcel, so you can put on, doing the math, you can put 110 houses on one acre, one level. So now we're talking about 50 feet, we're talking about four, five floors. So that's going to increase exponentially how much traffic is going to go across these, these bridges and across the roads. So I'm, I'm, again, I'm opposed to it. The other thing that I question about the validity of Site C is that for affordable housing, North Albany is 40% higher than any other property in the city. So how do we consider that sustainable or affordable? That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I will call upon people that did not sign up to speak. Does any member of the audience wish to testify? And I do apologize, Gary, for missing you.
I'll let it go this time.
Well, I appreciate that. If you're attending virtually, please raise your hand and unmute yourself, and if you're on the phone, please provide your name and address, or just put your name and state where, that you live in the city of Albany, for the record, and sign up sheet at the table, and approach the podium in person, or send your information to the email provided. Anybody in chambers? Thank you. Does staff wish to respond to testimony presented?
Thank you for the opportunity, and I appreciate all the comments. I did just want to clarify a few of the comments that were provided. Adopting climate-friendly areas is not, the city's not going out and building housing or adding housing. The capacity figures that are in the staff report and what we were required to calculate to ensure we had capacity for housing assumes every single site is vacant and that it would be built to the maximum height. And we know that's not going to happen, which is why we want to have a little bit of a buffer, because we do want to see housing in these areas, but we're not expecting all of our new housing to go into the climate-friendly areas. These zones, including in North Albany, mixed-use commercial allows all these housing types already. The height is already 85 feet there. The community commercial zone is 50 feet already. You can't, this is not an affordable housing program. This is just trying to encourage mixed uses and ensure those are areas where transit is provided. So there is a park-and-ride lot over in North Albany in, in this area. I do want to note that seven stories is not something that's encouraged, and actually, you could build seven stories with 85-foot-tall buildings, but we did have a market analysis done, and the market analysis, it's on the website. I didn't provide it as, as part of the findings, but they're not projected to see much more than four stories in Albany for the foreseeable future, because it's more expensive to go taller, maybe five stories. And, you know, it's, we're, we're just not expecting to, to see that type of development based on, you know, a professional person who did a market analysis to, we wanted to know what the actual development capacity might be and what might we actually see. And it might be four or five-story development, if that. And it might be four- or five-story development if that. And then regarding a traffic study, each time a development warrants a traffic study, one is done. It's done with the development so that if there are any impacts that, if the development may cause impacts to the system, whether it's the transportation system or another system, those are analyzed at the time of development. The last thing I'll say is that we do collect STC fees on development and that there is a transportation STC fee, and those fees are used to help pay for any improvements that might be needed to the system to ensure that we do our best. The climate-friendly area in North Albany was a larger size, and it was reduced down to only include the mixed-use commercial area and the community commercial area. And the goal behind the North Albany plan was to have density and more intense mixed-use development south of the railroad tracks closer to Highway 20. When North Albany was annexed, they did do projections of build-out, and at that time, it was, the TSP that was in place at that time that was done projected 19,000 households. So, and that was done back then. So they were looking at the transportation system being able to accommodate those when the annexation happened. And that's, these are just data pieces that might be helpful or not. I think that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Number nine on the item, the list, is does council have questions for staff? Councilor Monogue?
Isn't there a fire station up in North Albany as well? Okay, just wanted to point that out as far as the emergency questions that came up, that there is actually emergency personnel stationed up in North Albany?
Yes, it's on Gibson Hill Road, and there are other ways to get out of North Albany, not crossing Highway 20 or getting down to Highway 20 if there was a bottleneck.
The counselors? Counselor?
I don't have a question. I have thoughts about this.
We're going to deliberate after the questions, so.
Okay. I'll hang off.
Okay. Do the counselors have any questions? Thank you. Now I declare the public hearing closed at 6:51 PM. Does the city council wish to discuss these amendments? Counselor Thompson?
I certainly do. You know, why are we here tonight? I want to echo what Brad Dennis said. We're here because the state says we have to do this. And it's just a very top-down, one-size-fits-all kind of planning. The folks that are here tonight represent lots of other folks. I've never heard anyone tell me what Albany means. Like, the main thing we have to do in Albany is create denser areas. No one says that, whether in North Albany or the historic district. I just want to add, without repeating, transportation issues. In this document, transit is mentioned numerous times. Does anyone think that, there's a word transit. We have a transit agency. Based on the kind of density that is being proposed here, our transit would be woefully inadequate to meet the goals of folks not needing a car. And that transit equals costs. All the thing I'm going to talk about is equalling costs. We didn't talk about the water, wastewater infrastructure in North Albany. That would be more cost, and that would be cost borne by, to improve it, to expand it. That would be a cost borne by all of us. And I realize, I agree, these are, we don't have a planned economy. We can't tell the market what to do, and we can't make them come here. I mean, heck, if we made them come here, the folks I know want nothing else than a grocery store on the west side of Highway 99. That's what we've wanted for years. So we can't make businesses come here. But it gives me pause when I'm asked to vote on this, when we have a proposal that could allow 85-foot buildings in Albany. It's just, it's just not the Albany that I envision. It's not the Albany I want to see. And it's not the Albany that the folks that came here tonight want to see either. You know, we currently, we are asking folks in this city to approve a levy for police and fire, and they should. We are working our way towards asking them to pay more for street repair. I am going to take a great guess that at some point we're going to have to increase the $9 utility fee for city services. And we're talking about increased density. That all comes with costs. And that's not, and the state is fine. They're fine for making us do all this, but they're not going to come through to help us. And that's my frustration. It's unfunded mandate, and it's top-down planning. And I just echo, the folks that are here tonight, I echo Cameron Settlemeyer's questions. I think the key thing about the downtown historic districts overlay is, yes, through Article 7 and the Landmarks Commission, those rules would stay in place. But this kind of development puts pressure. I think the key word is puts pressure. It puts pressure on it nearby, and then it becomes, look, I followed the Landmarks Commission for years, and there are holes in that. I look forward to going over Article 7 and strengthening it, but the pressures of development over time just poke holes in our historic districts. And I'm really concerned. I'm very concerned about the future of our historic districts. So all of that causes me to, I mean, I would like to say no to the whole thing, but I'm definitely in favor of a motion that would at least take away section or however you call it, Part C.
Site C.
Site C, yeah, North Albany, the North Albany area. I'm definitely in favor of that.
Any other counselors have any comments? Counselor, McClellan was first. Counselor?
Great, thank you. I think one of the things that we are, that we just need to come to a reality is that Albany is growing. It's not what it used to be, and I think we have to face that reality. Folks are moving here, and I'd rather we have options for people for middle housing or additional housing or mixed uses. And I think we just, I think sometimes people maybe who have lived here for a really long time or moved here expecting something different, like you said, what Albany means to you or what you see Albany as, that's what you see Albany as. There are a slew of people who move here and see Albany as something different. And I think that we are leaving that part of the thought process and that part of the conversation out. And I'd rather for us to be prepared than underprepared in scrambling. And while I understand the whole thing about it being a quote-unquote "top-down", we do have to abide by what the state says. We are not independent of that. There are no exceptions of that. And I understand that some people don't like rules and they don't like compliance. But in order for us to get things done correctly, we do have to comply in a space where we don't have a lot of say. And I'd rather for us to be in front of something than be behind the eight ball, if that makes sense. So I think when you talk about what you envision as Albany and what you didn't sign up for, I think there are a lot of people, myself included, who envision and know that growth is coming and rather be prepared. And for some people moving here who have families or starting families, I think that they would need and want options. And while I understand traffic is a huge concern, talking to someone who comes from a huge traffic-filled city, and when we talk about density, I don't think people really understand density. I think folks have heard this as a buzzword, and it's a new vocabulary word for people, and it's been thrown around. This is really not a lot of density if we're talking about real density. I think if we can get in front of something and we have options and we're in a space to make a decision, I think we should do that as soon as possible versus waiting till it's too late.
Other counselors? Counselor McLeod?
Thank you. There's, there's parts of this I like, and there's parts of this I don't like. Like I said earlier, I'm concerned with townhomes in the downtown area in the historic district. I'm concerned with these areas becoming completely residential instead of totally mixed use. I'm sorry, totally residential instead of mixed use. I do really want to see a grocery store off of 53rd. I do really want to see mixed use even in North Albany to help people not have to drive across the bridge, to help people be able to get their needs met in North Albany without having to leave the area. So I, there's a lot of this I like. There's some of it I don't, and I'm really kind of torn at this moment. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Counselor Miss Smith?
Thank you. I'm glad that staff mentioned that the city is not building houses. That we are accused of that repeatedly and becoming personally enriched from building houses and luring people here to build houses. That does not happen. The market determines where and when houses are built. The market determines when and where grocery stores are built. I, too, would like to have a grocery store closer than the grocery cluster in Site D. But we don't because no one has wanted to build one in the south end of town yet. I also understand the concern about increasing density. Density is what happens when people want to live in, all in the same place. Density is what has to happen in order to protect farm and forest land, which is the basis of Oregon's land use planning system. It happens when people have children, and they have children, and they have friends, and they go away to college, and they convince their friends that they are going to go home, and they'd love to have them live with them. They talk to their relatives and their friends in other states and other places, and they come out here too, and they find that it's a wonderful place. That makes density. As for, and I remember when the original comp plan was being developed, and there was discussion about how tall buildings should be in the downtown. How many stories would we allow? Should we allow? Someone said five stories, and that got kicked around for a while, and people thought it was patently ridiculous to allow buildings that tall. Didn't happen. And then one final comment. This is all just, well, one final comment is that when we are elected to this office and we take the oath of office, we swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the laws of the state of Oregon, and the ordinances of the city of Albany. And complying with state law is something that we are bound to do. It's not a sin. It's not a crime. It's a requirement. It's something that we have taken an oath to do. I don't always agree with state law, but I don't disagree with this one. Establishing climate-friendly areas, drawing a line around different parts of our city maps is not going to fundamentally change anything overnight. It's going to provide opportunity for change and opportunity for good change. I don't disagree with it. I don't, I, I just don't think it's going to change any of our lives dramatically. But it will change, it will allow Albany to change in a good way in the future.
Counselor Monogue?
I tend to agree with Counselor McGee. Growth is coming, whether we like it or not. It will come here, and we, as leaders of the city, need to make sure the city's set up for success when that growth does happen. We need to make sure that we are planning ahead and getting ahead of that growth and being smart about where we want the city to grow. And so I agree with this package. I think that it's a good idea for us to make sure we're planning for growth in a smart way.
Yeah, so I concur with what Counselor Smith said, that we do take this oath. I mean, we do have to abide by state standards, whether we like it or not. And I do also agree with Counselor McLeod. There are parts of this, parts of this that I do like, parts of it I don't. I still have my reservations, especially when I'm hearing concerns from folks in North Albany about transportation, about, I know that we don't really have any, and I know that this is in motion. Nothing is, nothing is being built right now. We have times to address, we have time to address the public transportation issues. We have time to address maybe more congestion on the bridge. I, you know, I'm appreciative of the work that's gone into this plan, and I believe that Albany can grow in a way that's climate-friendly and community-conscious for everyone in each, that they'll be impacted by these zones. And I really think that, I'm really happy to see that there are folks, you know, Ward One represent, you guys are here, and you're willing to share your input. And so we can move forward together in a way with continued collaboration as, you know, maybe 10 years down the road, when something does get built somewhere, have more input. Because I know I will be keeping an eye out and making comment on if something's complying with historic districts or if it's going to impact, you know, the size of a school in one particular area, et cetera. So just general, general thoughts.
Well, thank you, Counsel, for your input. One of the things that was on my.
Can I add a little bit? Sorry, I'm over here. Can I come, can I say again?
Repeat yourself or something new?
Yeah, I just want to respond, you know, I just want to point out that in the process of this, 13 cities sued the Department of Land Conservation. Unfortunately, Albany wasn't one of them. So I just want to, I want to, once again, emphasize that it's hardly, and they kind of made the points of trying to stand up for a home rule. So it's not, like, voting no on this would not be like in violation of my oath to uphold the Oregon Constitution. It was presented to me to vote on. And so this idea that we just have to, yes, we have to produce some document at some point, but you can vote no. You can vote no on it when it's presented to you. And if I can't vote no, then don't put it in front of me.
Well, that's your choice, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll start with my comments. So when I first thought about doing this city council, running for mayor thing, I made a list of approximately 85 things that I wanted to see happen before my time was done. We had a Housing Affordability Task Force. We had 47, approximately 47 people that participated in that task force. We had people from all over the city. We had people with services. We had people that were coming off of homelessness. We had former mayors, former city councilors, developers. And from that, staff put together a housing implementation plan that was approved and funded by the governor. She came here and talked about what she saw and what she appreciated about it. Now, I'm here as the mayor. I'm not thinking about my time. I am not. I think about 25 years in the future. So now we're 20 years in the future. If we don't prepare this city for those young people that are going to Caliponia Middle School and Sunrise Elementary School and North Albany Middle School, we have failed them. So being proactive, putting plans in place to ensure they want to come home after they go to the military, after they get a job somewhere else, after they go to college somewhere else, when they come home, I tell them, we want you to want to come back to Albany. When I first got here, my kids could not wait to get out of Albany. Right? And there's lots of kids here that I refereed their football games or softball games, over 25 years refereeing football. A lot of those kids are buying homes, or they're moving back here. You know, we made a promise to this community that we would prepare this city for the future, and we're doing that. And this plan doesn't change anything other than establishing climate-free areas. I see no reason to vote against it. And for one, And for one, it doesn't change any fundamentals of what we currently have in place. It just identifies areas as climate-friendly. So I'm hoping that this staff, this council votes yes, and then if we need to make adjustments, that's what we're here for. We can make changes. This is not a permanent document. This is an opportunity to start, put together a climate-friendly area package that makes sense for the future of Albany. Now, 25 years from now, I probably will not be here, right? But if we don't start planting the right tools in place and the right systems in place for the future city councils and mayors and kids and people that work here, then we're not doing our job. I care about North Albany. People didn't think I cared about old buildings. I love old buildings. You know, I made the motion to sell the church for a dollar to the nonprofit that has the church. But we also have to think about the future. And if we have developers that want to build character matching buildings downtown, why would we stop that? So I've said enough. There is an ordinance in your packet for consideration, pages 24 and 25 of the city council packet. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance amending the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted by ordinance number 4836 of the City of Albany Zoning Map and Albany Development Code, which were adopted by ordinance number 444, adopting findings.
Here's our...
Move to read the ordinance a second time.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. We'll have to bring this back. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda, item seven, oh, excuse me, public comment is next. Public comment is a time for Albany residents to speak and for the councils to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make any decisions during the public comment, but will take the comments or requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council's rules and observe the standards, the same standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When you get to the microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in the confines of the City of Albany, Oregon. You know, I'm 60 now, right? So I'm getting 60, so got glasses, you know, whole nine yards. First is Marcy Hermans.
Hi, my name is Marcy Hermans and I do not live in the confines of the City of Albany. I'm actually a resident of Tangent. I wanted to talk to you guys tonight, mostly to introduce myself. I am running for the Greater Albany Public School Board in the upcoming election. I really place great importance on collaborating and actively involving all stakeholders in the education goals and decision-making of a school district. And so stakeholders also would include the city councils in both, well, both all Tangent, Albany, and Millersburg. So I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself. I have a background in education, having retired last June as an office manager for the Correll School District after 22 years. And I am greatly hoping to bring that experience to the school board. And as I said, I just wanted to introduce myself and say that I hope to have the opportunity to collaborate with you guys on education here in the district, here in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Bill McHugh. Did I spell that, say that correctly?
Yep.
Thank you. Oh, I know you. How you doing?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors, and thank you for your time that you give the city that not many people say thank you very often. I live at 3266 Countryman Circle Northwest, about a quarter mile outside of the city limits, but in their Albany urban growth boundary. Currently, there's a water line being replaced on Countryman Circle. They started yesterday or the day before to get pretty serious about putting it in. Back up the calendar, 32 years ago, Albany took over the North Albany Water System-ish. It was Dunbeck Water back at the time, and I've lived in Albany, in North Albany forever, so I have a little history out there. Any rate, when they did that, I don't know if it was a policy or a rule or what, but they realized not every house was built out there that was going to be built. And if you were a lot of record, they kind of reserved a water right for you, that you could have city water there someday when you wanted it. Back seven years, I'm a real estate broker in Albany or recently retired, and I wanted to build a house out there and I ended up buying a lot that wasn't a legal lot of record when the water was done in 1991 or whatever it was. And the city said, no, you can't have water. Even though the water goes across my front, there's water, there's plenty of water, city has good water, wants to sell water, but I can't have any. That was a bit of a concern because my house is downhill of where Teledyne Wa Chang dumped environmental waste back in the 70s. So I checked with them before I bought my property and they told me it's all cleaned up, nothing to worry about, but if you did want to worry about it, these would be the chemicals you'd look for, which we did and we have never found any. Two years ago, a client of mine tried to buy that property where the contamination was dumped and they ended up telling him they had to do a million-dollar cleanup before they could sell the property. That's cleanup of the something that's no problem. It's a little bit unnerving when your well is downstream of that. So I would kind of like to look again at having water. I don't know if many of you know, but there's a bill pending in the legislature right now to require, I think they're doing the mandate thing, again, I think it's coming, to increase the density of the development in the urban fringe, just like they're doing in our cities. That actually makes some sense. How many of us really need two acres and it's a lot to mow? At any rate, I really think that it would be a great time to get rid of that rule and the city has lots of water and if they're going to do it right now, it'd be a really good time when they're putting in the water line.
So I would have you get your information to the city manager if he doesn't already have it, and then staff will work with you on that.
And I talked to the public works guy the other day.
Thank you. Next is Rebecca Bond, the executive director of Visitors Association.
Thank you. I don't live in the City of Albany, but I do work for the Albany Visitors Association. Mayor and city council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and share with you our support for the changes of the Cooperative Tourism Grant application and the transient lodging tax collection policy. The proposed changes to the Cooperative Tourism Grant application more clearly identify eligible projects, including public art, and will help applicants navigate the process. We hope these changes will help to encourage more participation from organizations focusing on tourism that also align with the city's goals, falling under great neighborhoods, and a healthy economy. We also believe the collection of TLT for short-term rentals is necessary. For one, it would create equity for those collecting and benefiting from using TLT dollars in Albany, leveling the playing field for all who collect and pay this tax on their properties. Secondly, it will increase funding for tourism marketing efforts, including the CTP grant, which will benefit everyone. Lodging tax provides funding for community improvements as well as tourism promotion and destination development. TLT generated over $1.3 million for the City of Albany last year and it funds a variety of things. The largest recipients are the Albany Visitors Association, Albany Parks, and Albany Downtown Association, along with City Services. The funds are also directed to the Monteith House Museum, the Trolley, Police and Fire, and the Cooperative Tourism Promotion Program. Through TLT, visitors contribute funding for these programs that benefit both visitors and residents. According to research from Travel Oregon, the past 12-month occupancy rate for short-term rentals in the Willamette Valley has increased year over year, while the occupancy rate for traditional lodging facilities like hotels and motels has decreased. Hotels and motels in Albany are the ones collecting the tax, which pays for the marketing and destination development that benefits everyone. There are 10 lodging properties and two RV parks in Albany who are the only ones currently collecting that tax. This is suitable funding, or this, excuse me, this is sustainable funding source, a lot of S's, used to help promote local businesses and stimulate the economy. The state is already collecting 1.5% tax on short-term rentals, which accounts for a growing percentage of room tax collected at the state level. Other cities and counties have been collecting this for years through different mechanisms. Some collect directly on their own and others have contracted with the state to collect on their behalf. The city council passed a motion directing staff to collect lodging tax from short-term rentals in May of 2019. The estimated range reported in the memo that you have received from staff, from $175,000 to $250,000 annually, is another reason to start collecting these dollars.
Thank you, Rebecca.
I'll leave this one. Thank you.
Next up is Brad Dennis, North Albany, House Bill 2138.
Hello again, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I'm Brad Dennis. Yes, I do live in North Albany. And I am, first, before I get to House Bill 2138, I wanted to mention that Counselor McGee said growth is coming. I agree with that. And Counselor McGee said that to be in front of transportation, when I was a Boy Scout, our motto was be prepared. And that's part of the reason why the North Albany Neighborhood Association invited several people from the city to meet with Representative Bosshart Davis, ODOT, and Benton County Road Department last November at Knife River to try and see if we can't get something moving in North Albany. We will continue to try and do that, to get in front of it, because getting in front of it means you build your roads before you make the problem worse. In other words, you've heard the saying, when you're in a hole, stop digging, right? So regarding House Bill 2138, which extends the middle housing reach from the state, again, this mandate and the stripping of authority from the cities, I want to give a thank you to Matthew Rutgers for working with Representative Shelley Bosshart Davis in crafting an amendment to that House bill. It was the dash four amendment. I will say that it was rejected by the Housing Committee, but nevertheless, we appreciate his effort. And that just goes to show that even if you're part of government, you can push back against the state by testifying. I can't tell you how many public hearings I've testified this year and letters I've written to Senator Gelsar Bluen and Bosshart Davis. You all can do that too. We don't have to just take it. We can respectfully push back by doing our civic duty and reaching out and testifying. If you read the Statesman Journal, keep an eye peeled for a story about the impact of middle housing in North Albany. The paper had reached out to Representative Bosshart Davis, who forwarded my name onto the reporters for the Statesman Journal. I took them on a tour today, the reporter and the photographer of North Albany, pointing out several areas of middle housing. We even were fortunate to see an accident at Highway 20 and North Albany Road, which demonstrates some of the issue. They took a picture of that. So anyhow, keep your eye open for that. And with that, I'm going to hold over my comments on traffic cameras until the next meeting.
Thank you. Don't hesitate to send stuff in.
All right.
Thank you. So next is action items on the agenda, number seven. Item A is ordinances, amend Albany Municipal Code AMC, Chapter 3.4, Transit Lodging Tax. Jennifer Ware will be speaking on page 283 and through 298 in your packet.
Good evening, councilors and mayor. I'm just back here again. We had talked on Monday night about our TLT code language and updating it, and we are here today for action.
Any questions for Jennifer today, counsel? We've talked about this at the work session. Counselor McLeod?
Thank you. Yeah, murals still in there.
That's, we're on TLT first.
Oh, sorry. My mistake. I'm on the wrong item.
Okay. Okay. Any questions or concerns or comments on the TLT?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I move adoption of the ordinance on page...
Counselor? They got to read it first. No, I'm going to read it first, so...
I'm sorry.
Would the city attorney please read the ordinance in title only?
Yes. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC, Section 3.14.020 through 3.14.260, transient room tax by updating definitions and adding clarifying language.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time in title only?
I move that we read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Do a roll call, please. Counselor McLeod?
Aye.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor McGee?
Aye.
Counselor Newton Azor? Counselor Thompson? Counselor Monique?
Aye.
Would the city attorney please read the ordinance a second time in title only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC, Section 3.14.020 through 3.14.260, transient room tax by updating definitions and adding clarifying language.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is adoption by motion. Deerfield Park contract award, Director Kim LaDain, pages 299 to 300 in your packet.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the time this evening. I just wanted to come back in front of you once again for Deerfield Park. We went out to bid, we received a wide variety of contractors who put in for the project, and we would like to award today to Durbin Excavating. So just able to answer any questions that you may have, and the hopes is that you'll give me a thumbs up and we'll be able to enter into a contract and get a timeline going.
Counselors, any conversation or questions or concerns?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
I move to award the contract for the Deerfield Park renovation to Durbin Excavating LLC of Eugene in the amount of $662,431.65.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passed, Director. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll let you know when construction will begin.
We'd like to, if you can also invite us to the grand opening, that'd be great.
Do not worry.
Okay. Item C in your packet, resolution designation of newspapers of record. City recorder Eric Glover, pages 301 to 303 in your packet.
Good evening, mayor and council. We talked about this on Monday. This is basically to broaden our newspapers of record to include the Statesman Journal, the Albany Democrat Herald, and the DJC, or the Daily Journal of Commerce, which we already use. If you have any questions, I would be happy for those tonight, but I think we discussed it on Monday.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? I have a motion.
I move the, approve the resolution designating the 2025 papers of record.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, counsel. Next is the adoption of motion by motion, collaborative tourism promotion grant, CTP program. Jennifer Ware, pages 304 to 308 in your packet.
Hello, I'm back. So as discussed on Monday, this is to make changes in the process for both the process and the application for the... and the application for the collaborative tourism grant. The process is to submit the same documentation for both Monday and tonight's session, so that's why it's still in there. But per our conversation on Monday, the language was going to be changed to public art such as murals or statues, as suggested on Monday in the session. If there are any other questions or comments?
Are you satisfied? All right, okay, good. So council, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the CTP grant program changes, including the changes suggested by councillor MacLeod.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. President passes. Next, so Peter, oh, excuse me, Eric, we have an executive session coming up. Can I do business from the council after that, or do I need to do it before?
Do it now, I think is...
Okay, we'll do it now. So what did we start with last time? I think we started with, yeah. So this time I'll start with board three. So councillor McGee?
Nothing tonight.
Councillor Smith?
Nothing.
Councillor Montague?
Nope.
Councillor MacLeod?
Nothing from me tonight.
I started with you last time, so you'll go last, though. Councillor Thompson?
No.
Oh. Councillor Newton Azor?
I feel like I have to say something now. It's been really nice weather. I don't know, don't really have anything else to share. Happy this year, we didn't meet on my husband's birthday. It was yesterday.
Happy birthday to him.
Yeah.
So since I'm last, yesterday I had the privilege of being, serving my 19th year at the African-American Youth Leadership Conference at Oregon State at Lestow Stewart's Center. It was over 400 children from all over the Lament Valley, from Eugene to Salem to the coast, to Sweet Home attended. And it wasn't just African-American kids, but it was just kids that were interested in understanding, participating in the workshops and the education and going to the college fair. And it was a great event. It's my 19th year as MC, and the Teacher of the Year for Oregon was our keynote speaker, and he did a great job talking with the kids and just learning about his history and the things he does for students up in Portland. And then tomorrow I will be announcing the winners of the If I Were Mayor competition. I'll make sure Matt gets that information tomorrow, so I'll be reading the essays again tonight and then finalizing. I'm down to three, or I'm down to five, but I have to pick one for tomorrow, so I'll get that to you tomorrow. What's, close of business, is that okay?
Close of business?
Close of business, okay. All right, perfect. Got to get permission from the media guy. And then I am watching two bills, Senate Bill 789 and Senate Bill 812. They are related to my market, is in my business, is senior housing and how assisted living communities are regulated. And also, one of the things I brought to Senator Gelsar Bluen's attention is that assisted living communities are not required to give their clients, their residents, a detailed invoice. I think that's a travesty. I get a detailed invoice from my barber when he cuts my hair, and these people are spending between, you know, $3,500 and $8,000 a month. There should be a requirement by the state to have a detailed invoice. And also, I brought up the fact that, you know, these communities are making millions of dollars on our Oregon residents, and they're using our fire department for lift assists. And I think that, well, I plan to go up and testify on that, because our fire departments, a lot of their runs, if you watch, what's that program we have, Pulse Point, a lot of those are lift assists at our communities, and we don't, I think it's a misuse of our resources for them to collect that kind of money and not provide that service to their employees, their residents. That's my soapbox, and I'm off it now. City managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council had asked at a previous meeting for an update on low-income assistance. So I'll tell you this evening that another bill that you can add to your watch list, Mayor, is HB 3527, which is the state's bill to develop a low-income assistance program. Here, locally, we have about 200 people, and it's an approximate number, 200 customers enrolled in our low-income assistance program through CSC, so they receive financial assistance through Community Services Consortium. One thing I've neglected to tell you about HB 3527 is it's been approved by committee and sent to Ways and Means, so I think that's a good sign for that bill. Wanted to also bring your attention to compost for a cause, which is compost that's being sold to benefit the Parks Foundation, and that's this Saturday out at the Ops Center from nine to two. So for $20 for a cubic yard, you get the best compost in Albany.
A yard?
And if you, if you are a grower, if you have a garden you tend, that will be very beneficial to you. And then lastly, we do have an ARA meeting. First, we have an executive session, then an ARA meeting, and then tomorrow evening we have a CIP session, a joint session for the council, the Budget Review Committee, and the Planning Commission. So you guys are earning your keep this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, item 10, recess to executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations in accordance with ORS 192660, subsection, subparagraf two, subparagraph D. I'll see you in executive session. Before that, we do that, let's take a 10-minute bio break.
Senate Bill 812 and 789, correct?
Yes. No, there's nothing here. Oh, there it is, right there. The city council will now meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations in accordance with ORS 192660, subsection, subparagraph two, subparagraph D. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other participants must exit. Online audience members will be moved into a waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will readmit those remaining in the waiting room to rejoin the meeting. In-person audience members must leave the council chambers and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, staff will open the doors and we can rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in executive session. I'll now recess at executive session time at 7:36 PM.
Do we, would we like the city attorney to move forward with the negotiations?
I'll move that we move forward with the negotiations as discussed.
Second.
Motion, I have a motion and a second on going forward with the items that were discussed in executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, counsel, I appreciate it. I will now, next meetings, it will be Thursday, April 10th, tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM here at the council for a joint work session with the planning budget review committee. And then Monday at April 21st, 2025 at 4:00 PM. And Wednesday, April 23rd, 21st and 23rd at 6:00 PM for a council meeting.